Call the El Reno Recreational Authority, or excuse me, El Reno Airport Authority regular meeting Tuesday, July 14th, 5:30 to order. Roll call, we'll start with Ms. Ryder.
Here.
Trustee White.
Here.
Vice Chairman Ballhorn.
Here.
Chairman Robinson?
Here.
Consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the El Reno Airport Authority and will be enacted in one motion. Should the discussion be desired on any item, that item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Number one, approval of minutes of June 9, 2020, regular meeting of the El Reno Airport Authority. Number two, approval of claims requiring trustee authorization for the period beginning June 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2020.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. We'll start with Ms. Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ballhorn.
Yes.
Chairman Robinson?
Yes.
Discussion items. Three, discussion, consideration, and possible action regarding the terminal building layout and design of the El Reno Regional Airport.
Well, good evening, everyone. So you all have the documents there in front of you to follow along with me. I'm going to be very brief and just give you a 10,000-foot view over the layout of our terminal building. Obviously, there'll be a lot more to come as we're still designing, getting down into the ditty-gritty of the building. So this layout plan is something that the Airport Advisory Board, Kent, Matt, and I kind of all kind of agree on and really loving the flow of this building. As I mentioned before, we went up to Grove to look at their building, and what we have done here is we have flipped it and made this our own. So what we have done is learned from their mistakes. We've kind of maximized our opportunities within the square footage. You can notice we've got 4,356 square foot of indoor area, and then we have roughly 1,412 square foot of outdoor viewing area, and hopefully possibly a dining area with some food truck options in the future. So our multipurpose space, I just kind of want to run through that. This will have 24-hour access for pilots. That is a requirement from the Oklahoma Air Hyungs Commission to have that. That's going to be on the left there. You can see that door opening outward. The bathroom that's in there will also be a safe room, so of course, having that 24-hour access to that safe room is very important. You can see the conference room on the right side of the building. That's also going to be a conference room where we can put up a divider and have meetings if we need to, but we'll leave it open so that we can have catering options in there, so we have a large space to do that. And of course, that leads outside to our outdoor viewing area and eating area as well. And of course, if you guys have any questions about that, I'll definitely answer them.
Adam, I tell you, I was, we flew to look at a couple, I could make them on the trip with you guys, but I went and looked at a couple of them, too. I love the layout. I like the way that the hangar itself goes to the shape of the other hangars, but yet we have that big, the big part that has, going to have the El Reno that has kind of beacon sign to it. It's just a, I think it's a great layout. I'm real excited about it. This is really the next biggest step that we've done. You know, we've got the fuel farm online, the hangar's about done, so, and you'd seen we were getting prepared for it, but this is the last big, big piece of the puzzle at the airport, and I'm just real excited about it. You know, this is really the front door to our, our community through, through the aeronautic side of it, and I think we're really, we've taken this airport to the next level, you know, on everything we've done the last probably five or six, seven, eight years. I mean, it's just unbelievable where, where we are now, where we were then, you know.
I feel like this completes the circle on also capturing our heritage in the airport because, you know, it's established 1941, you know, it was...
But it matches that hangar, it matches that hangar. I love it. And, and I do like that it matches that round top, but it's more, we went and saw a round top, Matt, and then did not like that at all. Birds were getting up there, it was a maintenance nightmare. They had a hard time. So we learned from some of those things, and I guess some of the boards and members that we went and traveled, bless you, that we went and did that. So I really think that this is really exciting. Now, Adam, you might kind of explain to everybody, this is a grant from the, well, the state, but it's FFA money, but it's, but it's the Oklahoma Aeronautics Association. And basically, it's about a $500,000 grant with matching funds. What the plan was, and we've talked about this when I was Act of City Manager, and Matt and I, Matt helped me work on it when he was over at the airport before Kent was. We, we're going to take, hopefully, and you'll see later on in our, in our package about the bonds and everything else, we're going to sell some bonds, so we're going to kind of try to pay back $500,000 of that money that we borrowed, the 1.5, from the hospital, in order to do this, be part of our matching funds at this point in time, in order to do that. So really, it's kind of a neat opportunity that we're going to get the matching funds for the, the facility, the $500,000. But yet, the bonds come in, we'll be able to pay back immediately $500,000 of that money that we borrowed from the airport to help with the initial stake of this deal. And we still have money in the reserve fund on their side of it, on the reserve side. We're looking at about $1.3 million total, is that right?
Yes, with the design costs and everything, about $1.3 million.
And don't forget on the other matching funds, on the other stuff, we're looking at 10% matching on all the other stuff that we normally do on the airport stuff. There is no 10% matching on this. This is the only grant that's available. There's only been certain airports that have been chosen for this type of project. Once again, this will complete our airport.
Yes, we will be the seventh one to receive this grant, state. And this is a very great opportunity, but it's kind of, you know, you use it or you lose it kind of deal. That's what we are, and I think it's a perfect time.
And we've been working on it for about three years.
Yeah, it was last year or maybe two years ago, we passed up because we weren't ready for it, and now this is basically our last opportunity to do it, so.
Yeah, so we have to do it, or we'll lose that money at that point in time. And then, Adam, I think you've really brought a lot to the table as far as getting all the pieces that we were really missing, I think, at that point in time, Matt, don't you agree?
That's right, yeah.
Adam, how many people will the conference room hold?
So, so we're planning, as you can see there, it's going to be a 14 by 38 for the long course, and you know, it's set up, and so I believe that, you know, as long as we maximize that opportunity, probably about 15 folks around conference room table, and of course, with the L over there, we can have additional tables as well.
So, so since you're going to be doing education out there, I mean, there's potential maybe for educational things to go on in there, and maybe events or whatever, small events.
Of course, of course. So if you'll notice on the left-hand side, that 24-hour access, there's actually a classroom over there.
Yeah.
And so that will be used for that as also, you know, we have CF files, we're trying to get...
Tell them how big the classroom is.
Yeah, so the classroom is, is, it's going to be roughly about 20, 27 feet by about...
14?
14 feet, sorry. Yeah, so about 27 by 14. So it's going to be a nice sized classroom.
But basically what this is, we've, the combination, that's what Adam said, what our goal is to have flight training out there. If we have flight training, then we sell more fuel, more fuel gets more sales for us. That's just what the whole deal is. So the flight training is what we want to do. And then also, Adam wants to also bring in a lot of the educational side. We've talked to the VOTEC, we've talked to the El Reno School. So we're going to start planning that. Once we have this facility, we'll be able to have some opportunities there in order to do that. But our main goal is to basically utilize this for aeronautics and aeronautic training and annual reviews and just different things that you do in the aeronautic world. And a lot of the facilities we toured all have these, the ones, successful ones are the ones that have the areas that you can have a little party-type area and also a little classroom area. Is that right, Adam?
Correct, yes, absolutely.
That's all I got. I think it's a great deal. I mean, I'm excited.
Matt, you got anything, or you good?
Nope, that's all I've got. We don't have any action on that. It's just a discussion item.
Right. Discussion, consideration, and possible action to accept 85,000-gallon water tank located at El Reno Regional Airport from Heston Rural Water District.
So this is a, a tank that's existing out there, 85,000-gallon tank that's out there. It's right next to hangar number four, and the Heston Rural Water District used to use that. They don't use it anymore. We've got two items here together. There's an easement that Heston needs, and then eventually, we're going to need this tank to help for fire suppression for our new hangar and also for our new FBO, our new terminal. So that's what this is, is basically an exchange. This item would be to accept the $85,000, 85,000-gallon tank from Heston, and then the next item is to grant Heston an easement.
So basically, if it's full and they need it, they can still use it. They'll have an easement to get to where it is.
No, Heston won't use this at all. This will be just for El Reno Airport use.
Basically, what they did was they left it out there, and I contacted them, Matt and I worked the deal, and I had Roger, we got Roger involved. This is kind of a tie-up for when I was Act of City Manager. The bottom line is, we wanted to get that tank off of that facility, but then we figured out a way we could utilize that tank in order to get the suppression on the new hangar we got, and then we're going to need the suppression on the new FBO. So we're going to need that tank anyway. They don't want the tank. They don't really want to move, pay someone to remove it, but they need to get an easement for their land where they built their booster station at. So we just basically had Roger contact, Matt and I had Roger contact...
Kind of a trade-out deal.
...a bass, and let's just get it all cleared up. Let's get this thing sewed up, and let's get it off their books, get it on our books, get that land off their books, get it on our books. And then that way, we can utilize and move forward, because the first question after we approve this FBO tonight, they're going to want to know where the fire suppression system is going to come through. We can utilize that, that tank.
For additional water, yeah.
For additional water.
I did want to let you know the Heston Rural Water District Board has already approved the assignment bill of sale, so I'm just holding that until you approve the easement. So they're 100% behind me.
Yeah, once you do it, then Timmy will sign it as airport, and then I'll sign it in the background, and we'll be done.
And we can talk more about the easement on the next item, but the easement is, is a location of their booster pump station. It's on far south end of the airport. They have a Conex box and some other equipment that they, they just need some space there for their facility there.
It's right off our lot away. It complies with our, our layout. We want to make sure it's just right there on our, on our easement. We just want to make sure they have that, and they want to make sure they have it. We want to tie that up for them. And, and don't forget, Heston's a customer of ours.
Sure.
And a good neighbor.
All right, I make a motion, we approve?
Second.
The tank?
Have a motion in a second. We'll start with Ms. Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Chairman Robinson?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ballhorn?
Yes. Number five, discussion, consideration, and possible action.
Make a motion. Go ahead. How about you, Dan?
To, no, I'm just in the middle. To utilize utility easement with Heston Rural Water District for a booster pump location.
I'll make the motion to approve.
Have a motion in a second. We'll start with Ms. Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Ballhorn.
Yes.
Chairman Robinson?
Yes.
Reports. Report regarding event of facility updates given by Adam Fox, Airport Manager.
So, so what this is about, we were planning a, a day of celebration, a day, and August 22nd, you should have a flyer there in your packets about this. This is the first annual Fly El Reno or Fly RQO, which is El Reno's identifier for the pilots, if there's any in the room. And, and what we're going to do is, is we're going to have an event to kind of celebrate our recent accomplishments. So it's really, you know, we have a lot of traffic, a lot of flight schools that come and do a lot of touch-and-goes. We want to get them out of the airplane to get them to look at our new fuel system, the newest fuel system in the state of Oklahoma, one of the nicest fuel systems I've ever encountered. We want them to look at that. We want them to, to look at our, our layout of our terminal building, which will be displayed there. I'm hoping that everyone in the community comes out, because this is about you all. This is about you understanding what you have just right down the road from you, which is the airport. And so this will be a day that we have classic cars, vendors, warbirds, some of our very own warbirds, but also, we're going to have the A-26 Lady Liberty from Enid, Oklahoma, come down. They'll be on display. They have a bomb train for the kids. We're going to have an EAA or a Young Geagles chapter that's going to be doing first flights. There'll be more information to come on that. But yeah, I want to invite you all to come out and enjoy that. I know that I'm, I'm super excited about it, and I hope that you guys are excited about it as well.
Well, we're excited. Now, I think you worked real hard on it, Adam. I think that other facilities have had them for a long time, and, and I've gone to a lot of them, and I decided for us having one.
What was that date again?
August 22nd. It's going to be 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM.
Thank you.
If you have any classic cars or anything like that, that's, that's where I'm lacking right now, so bring those out.
Have we talked to the El Reno Car Club?
They, yeah, because they do.
They love that, yeah, good.
They'll help you out. Thank you.
Thank you, Adam.
Motion for adjournment?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
It is now 5:47. I call the El Reno Recreational Authority regular meeting Tuesday, July 14th, 2020. Roll call, we'll start with Ms. Ryder.
Here.
Trustee White.
Here.
Trustee Robinson?
Here.
Chairman Ballhorn?
Yes. Consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the El Reno Recreational Authority and will be enacted with one motion. Should discussion be desired on any item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Number one, approval of minutes of the June 9, 2020, regular meeting with the El Reno Recreational Authority to acknowledge the, and approve donation of the El Reno Optimus Club in the amount of $20,000 for the El Reno Youth Football Bleachers. Number three is to approve the purchase of bleachers for the El Reno Youth Football Field in the amount of $23,330 from Cunningham Recreation. Number four is to approve an agreement with the El Reno High School Rodeo Association.
I'd like to make a motion, we pull two and three. We approve one and four.
Have a motion to pull two and three and approve one and four?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. We'll start with Ms. Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee White?
Yes.
Chairman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Number two, Chairman Ballhorn, this is the $20,000 grant that the El Reno Football Bleachers, or, I'm sorry, El Reno Youth Football people have got. They got a grant from the Ashbrook Foundation. I know they worked real hard. They've been working real hard on that. That field is one of the best in accounting. It just kind of goes on with three. Basically, they're, they're about $3,000 short. We have that in the recreational fund. So we don't want to lose that grant. We feel like it's, it's good enough to do. So I, I think it's a great deal, and I want to make a motion that we approve, number two, to acknowledge the approval from the Optimus Club.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. We'll start with Ms. Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Chairman Ballhorn?
Yes. Number three?
Yes, I just want to make sure that, the same deal, we approve it. I just want to make sure that we approve it with the, the park recreation.
The amount with the extra $3,000.
It's a great, it's a great thing. It's, it finishes up. We end up owning, it's our equipment that we own. Basically, we get the $20,000 for free, so we got to have the new bleachers.
So you're making a motion to approve the 23...
I make a motion to approve the $23,300. Yes, sir.
Okay.
For Cunningham Recreation.
I have a motion?
Second.
In a second. We'll start with Ms. Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee White.
Yes.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Chairman Ballhorn?
Yes. Motion for adjournment?
So move.
Have a move?
Second.
In a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's now 5:50. I now call the El Reno Hospital Authority regular meeting of Tuesday, July 14th, to order. We'll start with roll call with trustee Ryder.
Here.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Trustee Ballhorn?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes. Good, consider agenda. The following items be considered routine by the El Reno City Hospital Authority. Be acted with one motion. Should discussion be desired on that item, that item will be removed from consent agenda and considered separately. Number one, approval of minutes for the June 9, 2020, regular meeting of the City of El Reno Hospital Authority. And number two, approval of claims that's requiring trustee authorization for the period beginning June 1, 2020, and ending June 30, 2020.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call votes start with Ryder.
Yes.
Trustee Ballhorn?
Yep.
Trustee Robinson?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes. Before we adjourn, have you noticed the dirtwork?
Yes.
So Kent, I know you've been working real close, and Matt and I have been getting, seeing the emails, copying everything back and forth. It's really going to start cooking here pretty quick, isn't it?
Yeah, you're going to start seeing the piers go in, I believe, next week, and they're on a very strict timeframe unless Mother Nature really does something wrong to them all the sudden, or where. It's a June 1 deadline, no questions asked.
Well, they were getting ready to haul dirt, and then it rained on them the last two days, so it's not that. But no, we're excited about that.
I didn't have time to say that.
Yeah, yeah. So we're real excited. It's really coming along, the Health Plex is really coming along pretty good. And I, I do want to add another note that the St. Anthony's has signed another doctor, a female doctor for our area. She's from O'Carachie. She'll be announced here, so that, that'll bring the total up. And then I guess there's two more in the hole, so it'll be a total, the doctors are coming in, just like we, like we thought. That's what's going to fill up Kent, that other side of the physician's office, is that correct? Okay.
Good.
Exciting.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Got a motion?
Second.
Roll call votes start with Robinson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Let's, we, let's move, it's dealer's choice, and I'm the dealer. Let's go to the city council meeting first, then we'll come back to the municipal authority, because I can just say a lot of that. And then we got some items that coincide that I really like to discuss on the city council side.
We don't have anything we have to approve per authority?
Well, we'll do the per authority on the other authority after we approve the council.
Gotcha.
So we'll do per, we'll do approval per council.
Gotcha.
We can, we can switch it up.
That's fine.
Is there anybody, is there pastor here? Okay, Roger, I'm going to put you in on this one. It's now 5:53. I now call the El Reno City Council to order. Before we begin, will you please stand? And Roger, would you mind leading us in the word of the Lord?
I certainly will. Please bow your heads. Dear heavenly Father, we pause on this beautiful sunny summer day to be mindful, mindful of our role as leaders and elected officials in this community. We pray for your guidance for these leaders and elected officials as they make decisions. We pray for those in our community, in our state, in our world who may be sick or ailing. We pray for those who may feel threatened or endangered. We ask your guidance and protection on our community, our state, and our country. All these things we pray in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all. All right. All right, we'll move on to, new business, the issues continue to that time, are there any? If not, we'll move on to new business, or I'm sorry, consent agenda. The following items be considered routine by the El Reno City Council, be acted with one motion. Should discussion be desired on that item, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. Number one, the city manager recommends with one motion that we approve, I'm sorry, approval of minutes, June 9, 2020, regular meeting of the El Reno City Council. Number two, approval of minute, of an amendment with Oklahoma High School Rodeo Association. Number three, approval of a local agreement, cooperative agreement for financial year 2020, 2021, between the City of El Reno and Canadian County Sheriff's Office to allow for Canadian County Jailhouse prisoners being held on municipal charges. Number four, approval of resolution 21-001, a resolution of the city council of the City of El Reno supporting continued participation in the Main Street program. Number five, to acknowledge and accept a grant from the Mary Kay Ashbrook Foundation for El Reno for the upgrading of the computer system in the library in the amount of $7,171.05. Number six, approval of resolution 21-022. That's a resolution with the FM Bank for lease renewal on 11/64/3700 regarding the supplement heavy-duty rescue pumper, VIN number 1S981HN-D1L3003060. And also approval of number seven of the budget amendments for the fiscal year 2019 and '20 and ending June 30, 2020. And number eight, approval of claims requiring council authorization for the period beginning June 1, 2020 and ending June 30, 2020.
I'd like to pull number five.
Pull five.
And...
Number two.
Pull two.
Make a motion on the rest.
I have a motion to approve. One, three, four, six, seven, and eight. You have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call votes start with Robinson.
Timmy?
Tim? Roll call votes start with Bob, Ballhorn.
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Did we leave him?
Okay, number two, approval of agreement with the Oklahoma High School Rodeo Association.
Was that, I noticed that it was, was 2,500 on previous years, and now it's 1,500, and that is...
Yes, so, so the, yes. It comes out of the hotel motel tax, hotel motel's down. Previous years, we've done 2,500. The agreement sets forth the things that they're responsible for, and the things that we're responsible for, so that we have the ground prepped and ready to go for them. They bring in a lot of out-of-towners for the event, so that's where, we, we love the event, but we have to reduce the grant amount, and that's, that's consistent with other grants that we've issued this year.
We've been, we've been reducing all the grants amount, or shutting them out, and we haven't done them. And don't forget, you approved it.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, just now, on the other one. Okay.
Yes.
Because we're just clarifying this and this.
One clarification for everyone.
I just, I got kicked out for a minute, so I'm a little behind if I need to know something.
Yes, sir.
No, we, we were just going on to number two.
No, we're, we're good. We put you on five boards, and you're going out of state.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So number, number three, I just wanted to thank the Ashbrook Foundation.
No, number five.
Or number five, excuse me. I just wanted to thank them for that. I appreciate that, and we all appreciate that.
And I tell you what I did, and Duff was kind of involved in this, we were laughing, but the road out by, the new road that we have that goes through the lake, the new development, right now, we don't have a name for the road. It's called, we call, we've been calling it the Water Tower Road. Well, we have to, in our system, we have to name the road, so we're going to do it. So we were trying to figure out, you know, who to name it after, what to name it after, and I came up with the Ashbrook Avenue. And I'm presenting that to the Planning Commission. I couldn't think of a better organization. They've done so much for El Reno, for the Little League, for, for the library, for everybody else, and they, they work, and they don't, you know, they, they do something timeless. They're not an organization that has to beg for money or do any, I mean, they, they're the, they're the real deal. So I'm with you. I, I think that, that's my proposal. I hope you all support this next month.
Sure.
But I couldn't think of a better name than the Ashbrook Avenue to come up with than, than the Mary Kay Ashbrook Foundation. She's done so much for this community, the people that serve on that board. Bob, do you want to just, do you want to make a motion to approve?
Make a motion.
Go ahead, Bob, Matt.
I just want to point out that those, that upgrade in the computer system is all the public computers. So all the computers that everybody goes in there and uses, they're all getting replaced. We have six of them currently, and this also is funding of some laptop computers, because we have new sitting areas. They can go take the laptop. We've got Wi-Fi in there, so it really is a big upgrade. We've had those computers now for several years that, you know, they, with so much use, they get, they lock up, they, you know, this is going to help them out a lot, so.
This is a big deal for, this is a big deal for that library. And don't forget, if you haven't been to the library, I mean, if you have not seen how beautiful that library is, it's unbelievable, and this will just be the cherry on top. Unbelievable.
I make a motion, we approve.
I got a motion to approve.
Two and five.
Second. Roll call votes start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Chairman White?
Yes. We'll go on to E, audience participation. Perco 19, regulation, this item is being temporarily adjusted to accommodate the situation at hand. If you wish to participate, If you wish to participate, please contact the city clerk by noon on July 14, 2020 at 405-295-6310 or lindseygrig@cityvalrenocom. Provide your name, phone number, email address, which you have, which to discuss. If your item is not on the agenda, please provide a brief description of the topic. You may participate by teleconference in person. You're requested by your presentation by three minutes. Any item being presented must pertain to the City of El Reno business. Are there anybody who wants to place? Yes, sir. Come on to the audience. If you can, please state your name and your address.
Danny Schrum, 4607 South Country Club Road, El Reno, Oklahoma. Chief Duff, our city manager, council members, mayor. Some of you have seen this, read some of this, but I've made some additions to it since then. This was a letter that I wrote to the City of El Reno, or to the citizens in El Reno. I retired from the City of El Reno Fire Department on June 30, 2020. I worked for the city for 34 years, four months. It has been my absolute pleasure serving this community. My wife and I have raised a family, put a roof over their heads, fed our children, sent them to college, many other wonderful things. These things are possible because of your hard earned tax dollars that you spent in this community. With you purchasing items from a Coke to a full basket of groceries, the city can purchase equipment, pay wages so employees of the city can serve you. Thank you. I came to work here looking for a pension and benefits. I found way more than that. I found a calling and a community that I've grown to love. These city employees are family, anywhere from the ones that have just started to the ones that have many years of service and to those that have retired. The safety of the members of this community and those traveling through have been a priority in my life. From doing fire prevention in schools, teaching safety classes to the public, teaching new firefighters to simply run and call. My wife would joke when we were sitting down at Christmas or Thanksgiving or birthday and the phone would ring to come to the station. Every time, never failed. That's just the way it was, but it wouldn't have had it any other way. I appreciate my family also for supporting me and supporting this community. They gave also the many times I wasn't home. It hurts to feel like I need to speak up about a couple of things. One is, what was written in the Reno Tribune was incorrect, but there were no badges or shields lost and non-uniform personnel would be furloughed. What has actually happened is personnel were laid off and all of the employees that didn't get laid off are on furlough, including emergency service personnel. Number two is the City of El Reno is coming off some of the best tax years they've ever had. It troubles me to have a downturn in the economy and immediately have to furlough and lay off. Something's not right. If you say you have a rainy day fund, I assure you would think that would be classified as a rainy day. There has been an active fire station downtown El Reno since before the 1900s. Now that there are furloughs, that station's been closed over 300 hours so far. We're getting closer to 400. The administration of the fire department has been staying the night when they can to help the downtown station stay open. But sometimes it has to be closed because personnel are on furlough. Also, I know that the police department has called the county sheriff's more than once for assistance because they don't have enough help on the street.
Day has been three minutes. I'll go ahead and give you a little bit more. Go ahead and finish up if you can.
Taxpayers of this community that live north of Elm are not getting the same fire protection they've had for as long as they have lived there. These residents are still paying the same taxes at the grocery store. Many days, your fire protection is coming from 27th Street Fire Station. So the further you live north, the longer it takes to get fire service. Whether it's a heart attack or your house is on fire. Person that's in cardiac arrest suffers permanent brain damage within four to six minutes of it happening. Residential house fire doubles in size every 60 seconds. This is a safety issue that you need to know about. On May 22, 8:12 a.m., I was at a meeting downtown. The fire department gets toned down on a pickup fire on East Woodson Industrial. The department is shorthanded that day. It's operating out of the station on 27th Street. I arrive on scene and shortly the man that is watching his livelihood burned to the ground, asked me where the fire department's at. I told him because the city is low on money, we are operating out of the 27th Street station. I don't have to tell anyone that lives here how long it takes to get from 2707 Faith Avenue to Woodson and Industrial. You can run numbers on fire EMS calls all you want. I filled out those run reports for years and almost always the numbers are skewed. Dispatchers are shorthanded and maybe putting times in for multiple agencies at once. It's difficult to get numbers in if you just have one department run a call, much less three. You're going to run numbers. I hope they're consecutive run numbers, not just ones that fit your needs. I felt like there was a need for the public to know this information since I don't Facebook. I had my wife put it out for me. This is not an issue with Tim. This is an issue with me. You responded on May 5 of July out by your pond. If there was one piece of advice that I would give you, Mr. Mayor, it is to review your video before you send it out. Hashtag platelets. Also, you threw my brother firefighters under the bus by telling everyone it was their fault by using more sick leaves than they ever have. Mr. Mayor, these men have come to work very sick over the years so the community would have adequate coverage and the city didn't have to pay overtime. It was a fire department administration policy that during this pandemic, if any of them had a cough, sniffle, fever or anything else that CDC said was a sign of a symptom of COVID, was told to stay home. Also, the downtown station's never been closed until the middle of March, 2020. And since then, it's been closed over 400 hours now, other than for re, other than remodel years ago. In December, you told Daily O'Clumlin that you expected they might see some impact for an ongoing slowdown of Oklahoma's oil and gas industry. The slowdown's been going on.
Mr. Schrum, I'm sorry. I'm going, I'm going to allow you just one, I've allowed you, really, you all got three minutes and it's still, you're, you're at six minutes now. But I'll go ahead and allow you one more minute and you finish up.
I have three minutes, correct, Matt?
Yeah. Well, we're...
This slowdown has been going on since October because of the expectation why the city staff and council had developed and approved conservative budget for its current year. It was the same budget from the year before. I don't think I would consider that conservative. You're expecting things to continue to roll in like they have in several years. It just wasn't the increase that your then city manager had proposed for this year. In your video, you state that we have never seen the oil slow down like this. Mr. Mayor, the city has lived and died on the oil field since the Rock Island shut down in 1978. You came to the firefighters on February the 4th and announced you had hired an assistant city manager. Then April 27th, you gave them the ultimatum to either lay off or furlough. Those are not choices. That's an ultimatum. With a very short time, you had changed your tune again. Remember December? Did you ask anyone what the effects would be on the emergency services or did you just not care? Last but not least, I was one of the administration officers at Station 1. The executive assistant had gotten a phone call from the administration and it was all about payroll. Ten days on a firefighter's pension or on a firefighter's income is a little hard to figure. I'm not reading his letter because one of the most disappointing things as a leader was what you had to say over the speakerphone. Do you need, do you need a reminder? Can't wait till June 30th comes. Why? Because Schrum will be out of here. And you say that about someone that has served 34 years? If that's a sign of a leader, go back and Google it. Chief Duff had told us that we couldn't spend any money unless you or Marcia said okay. I don't think Marcia would have ordered the fireworks. Hiring an assistant manager, furloughing and laying off city personnel, then ordering fireworks in the tune of $20,000 is a slap in the face to the city employees and the firefighters that you are expected to control the fires as the fireworks were going. That was no different than the vice mayor telling a police officer that he was going to be furloughed anyway. Just a slap in the face of city employees. And that was never addressed. The leaders of this community should be putting the safety of these citizens first, or at least admit to what is going on. The community voted years ago, the city voted while you were mayor to build the, to build and manpower another fire station. Not just when times were good. And that's his letter. And you can cut me off whenever you want, but I'm telling you, being a firefighter's wife for 34 years is one of the most terrifying events whenever you see them go out on the back of a truck. Things have changed. They don't, they don't ride on the back of the truck anymore. But when they are shorthanded.
Okay, that's, we've had that time. I've allowed way more.
I'm sure you have.
I have.
I think it says it easily.
Sure.
Than had to be read.
Okay, thank you.
You are so welcome.
Okay, anybody else? Have you had an audience participation at this time? Anyone else? Okay. Okay. We'll move on to nine. Number nine, discussion consideration possible action regarding budget reduction measures from City of El Reno, Oklahoma. Okay, I'll kind of address some of these stuff that I did before and we'll head on and you guys can ask questions. You know, I, I get paid the big bucks to sit up here and take the heat on this. I'm an open book. I, I want to share with some of the things that were addressed. Basically, the same things that were addressed tonight were addressed on Facebook and, and, and that's okay. Let's, let's talk about them. I think that's what we're here to talk about because I'm always willing to stand behind my record and my decisions and what we do. And at that point in time, I was the acting city manager. Let's kind of go backwards. The, the budget process started, like you said, back in the, last year at that point in time. And Mr. Frazier at that point in time voted, presented a 33% increase. Bob, is that right? Yep. I think we had a vote and Tracy, you voted for the increase. We voted without it. We went back and we pared it down. And what we did was we did a flat line budget because we didn't know what was coming down the pipe. So, and that's what you normally do in, in finance. You just do a flat line budget because you don't know where you're at. We started readjusting at the time of the Halliburton shutting down and some things like that. The bottom line is, is that it's easy to throw these punches out that, you know, we, we, where's the money? The money's in the bank. I presented a budget to you all. You all voted for it. And $5 million in reserve fund was in that budget. Now, including that, I had a flat line budget of $700,000 a month. Is that right? Okay, for sales tax. My time's not up. But, but the bottom line is $700,000 is what the sales tax was. And I also put in there, Marcia, I think we put in there $83,000 for the use tax. Is that correct? And guess what the sales tax came in last month at? Our very first month out of the box, where'd it come in at? $698,000 on sales tax, which is about a 12 underfall. And then a little over about a 50, we'll say $16,000 overage because it was, it came in at 100 on the, on the use tax. So we're really basically right on budget. That's including the furloughs. And, and the bottom line is, we have to be prepared for our people. And it's not, everybody took a furlough. Everybody took a cut in pay. These aren't easy times. I understand they're tough and they want to say this and that. You know, I'll, I'll address the call times the next time. The bottom line is, we have to get off the furloughs. We've been working feverishly, Marcia. And Mr. Chief Duff, you've been there. Mr. Sanders, you and I have been there right, right with Marcia left and right. We have a plan to do that, but once again, we were hoping the numbers would be stronger than what they were, not really on budget. I had another conservative budget of the $700,000. We assumed it would be more. They're not. So how do you come off furloughs when that is down? How do we justify that to the people? And here's the other thing is, is that, you know, on those furloughs, don't forget, 80% of those affected employees are union employees. 80% of that. It's 80/20. So if we're at that point, we need to consider the whole, as a city as a whole. And that's what I really, everybody's taking a hit. I mean, no one's more important than anybody else. Sure, we need the first responders and sure, their job, but we can't fight a fire without water. And we're all in this deal, we're all in the same boat together. And some of the other departments are getting a little distension based on, on what's going on as far as the fireworks go. And Ms. Ryder, maybe I'm wrong and I'm sure you'll correct me and I hope you do. You called me and said, are we doing fireworks? And I said, I'm really not for sure. I said, I think so. And you say, I ordered them. They were already ordered through Kent, I think, ordered them at that time because he was the chief. And I said, but we already had them in the budget. They were already approved from that year before. And you said, how does that work? I said, the invoice comes in and then we approve them before the 4th of July. And they were paid, they're usually paid before the 4th of July. They pay before they shoot the fireworks off. Is that right, Marcia?
Yes.
So it's in that fiscal year. I did state to you, the fireworks were not in this next budget that I presented to you and you agreed. They were not in there.
They were not in 2020.
So for you, well, hang on, but for you to say that, once again, it's red herrings out. That's not true. That's not factual. That we wanted, hang on, you don't have a chance to talk. I talk now.
You bet. You bet. And I can talk.
No, you don't talk. Hey. Listen to me. You don't talk. Okay? You're not, it's not your turn to talk. You had your turn. Let me get in here. So at that point in time, Ms. Ryder, we didn't have the fireworks, but it's, and I said, there's no problem. I didn't, you said, don't you think, I said, absolutely, I don't have a problem one. I said, you're not going to win one way or the other. It doesn't matter. We're not going to, half the people are going to be upset we aren't having and half the people are going to be upset that we're not going to have them. I said, I, I don't disagree one bit. And I canceled them immediately. Do you not agree?
Yes, you did.
I didn't put them in the budget I presented to you, Bob, that you voted on, or Tracy, or Timmy, or anybody else. I've never done that. We don't do that. We try to do a fiscal, I try to do a fiscal responsibility budget. And the bottom line is, is here, guys, you're getting these numbers skewed and we'll go over those numbers. We don't skew the numbers. We don't look at them. You're exactly right. The run numbers come in and I've got the run numbers. And we went over them because we take that very seriously. But for you to say that we don't care about the employees, that we don't want to get them on furlough, that's not true. Let me tell you what we did. You're talking about a choice. We had a choice with the unions. We met with both unions. Myself, Mr. Sandage, our, our outside counsel, Roger, you weren't there. Chief, you weren't there. We met with them. We handled it. And the bottom line was, we said, we're in dire needs. The money's going down. This COVID is way more than what we thought. And I'm telling you right now, we're not hiding any money. We're not doing anything else. The numbers don't lie. Three years ago, it was $15 million what we had income. Then the next year was $15 million income. This last year that we just finished out, guess how much it was, Tracy? No, guess.
I don't remember what it was.
I'll tell you because they just came out. It's $11 million.
That's it.
It's $11 million bucks. So we're not doing anything with it. The sales tax is going down. And it's just like everything else. You act like we're not preparing. We are preparing. We had to lay employees off to the tune of a million dollars on non-union. So it's not a spread like we're picking on anybody else. We're not picking on anybody else. Now, I am kind of picking on Danny because I'm a little upset with Danny. I do appreciate the service. I'm okay with that. I stand by what I say. I'm glad that Danny's retired now. Those men out there, those young men, those men out there, it's not about them. They're working their tail off. You know, they're not furloughed. They're furloughed and they didn't quit. They didn't quit two days after the vote. We proposed an option to them to say, what do you want to do? We don't have anybody else. They didn't come up with any ideas. Marcia, did you come up with, did they have any other ideas they wanted to come up with? Matt, did you hear anything from them? They basically said, we just don't really want you to cut. We understand, but revenue's coming in. What do you want to do? We don't want you to, to lay these guys off, these young people off. We don't want to do this. Take the furloughs. Let's get past this and go on down the road. We got a great letter from the FOP supporting every bit of our, our deal, understood every bit of our deal. We had letters and comments from the city employees, understood how hard it was. They are glad that they weren't laid off because we laid off so many. We didn't open up the pool. We didn't do all this other stuff. But yet we didn't get anything from the fire department. Let me tell you something. Those young men, we care about those young men. We care about them so much. We want them to be happy. We want them to be there. We didn't want them to lay off. Now, Danny, I'm not going to ask you because I don't want you to answer because it's not your turn to answer because it's my, it's my turn right here. But the question here is, how do you look young men in the eye and say, I'm laying you off right now? I'm laying, you take the layoff. You take the layoff and I'm going to be here and get the money. That wasn't my choice. You act like it's my choice and, and the group saying, well, it, it's not, you didn't make it our choice. The income was only so much. We had to lay it off to you. And the bottom line is, you look at the run numbers. We'll get into those in a minute, next item. But the bottom line number is, I stand by everything we did. I think the citizens are, are happy. My heart goes out to those young firemen. My heart goes out to the water department, every one of our employees. I didn't get paid a dime. We didn't have a city manager at all that got paid, Ms. Schrum, during that hold time because I took zero pay. And we're countless hours, Marcia, Matt, Jason, to do this budget, to work in here, to keep these guys. I had to look those guys in the eye and let the ones go that didn't furlough, that weren't badges. I didn't let any 911 dispatchers go. I didn't let any firemen go. I didn't let any policemen go. I didn't want to let them go. If they were going to let go, that was going to be their choice. And I'm glad those guys chose that because they worked their tails off and they deserve this. And as soon as money comes up, we have not done anything. done anything at this council, in this city, about be true to our heroes. All of our heroes. All of our heroes that we've been true to. It's not just one group. So to be criticized, I don't mind. But to be lied upon and, and say that we did this, that, you're not dealing with the facts. If you want to debate the facts, I'll debate the facts with you. The facts are this. The revenues are down. COVID has hit everybody in all aspects of business. Go talk to the lady that runs Johnny's. Go talk to Sid's. Go talk to Beechworth's. Go talk to everybody. Everybody's been affected. If you don't think they haven't, I, I don't know where you're living. We have more people unemployment we've ever had. I mean, it's not a Matt White thing or doing the budget deal. And no offense, thank God, I did stand up and do the budget that I presented to you all, that you all voted for. And thank God, I stopped the guy that was going to do 33% increases. Or we would have been in tremendous trouble where we were. We did a hiring freeze. We, we kept everything under wraps. And you're right. When I was acting city manager, we watched every penny, Marcia, that came across our desk because we didn't have the money. And we didn't want to lay off anymore. And we didn't want to furlough anymore or make it longer than what it was. Here's my plan. Later on the agenda, you have an item about bonds. I've been working tirelessly with the bond attorneys along with Marcia, Matt, Kent, and everybody else. And here's the bottom line is, I think we can sell some bonds if they come in at time. It won't cost the city money. I want to look at it. I'm going to propose it. They kind of agree with what I'm saying. I think I can do $2 million. None of this budget, the $700,000 that we budget, none of this has any capital in there. You all realize that?
Mm-hmm.
So I've got to have capital in order to maneuver, in order to get these guys safe, to give them equipment they need. Not just, not just the time, the one day they're missing, but the time, the, the money, the equipment. I don't have anything in there. So I want to go put those out to bid. Roger, I've talked to Alan, our, our legal counsel, and I've talked to, um, um,
Gander.
Yeah, Gander, Chris Gander. And we feel like we have a plan together that we're going to present. So I'm asking you tonight to go out and I'll bring those back to you next month, the 14th, in order to, to, to award or not award. If they come in right with the lumber's low, like I think they should be, based on what we're doing and what we're projecting, we should be able to let the $10 million bond. I still, we still have in our budget, $5 million in carry forward. That is exactly where we need to be. And if we don't know what's going on now, there's a resurgence right now going on. There's talk about shutting everything down. And you say, go ahead and pull the trigger and go ahead and start it by going back where they're going? We've had one month out of this budget that's basically below the budget amount. How in the world would we do that? You can't, you can't do that. That's not, you can't do that. That, that makes sense. We have to get another month or so underneath us. We have to get these things going. It's going to take $1,680,000 to get off furloughs. Is that right, Marcia?
Yes.
We have what they call a carry forward. Tracy, you and I kind of briefly talked about this. And we're working on that carry forward right now. We won't know those numbers on the carry forward till really maybe the end of the month, the beginning of the next month probably, because of all the invoicing getting in and everything else. We're working that process constantly. I personally called people. Marcia's called people. I cannot tell you about Amy Smith, who's working at night, taking pictures of tin horns to turn into the federal government to get funded for the, for the money that we're not getting from the tornadoes that these guys and everybody else worked. Millions of dollars. I can't account for that. I got to get that back too. I've hand taken those forms over to the state, Matt, have I not?
Yeah.
I pushed these through to where they're getting in people's hands months before the other people are. We're in the list. We're on the hole. Is that correct, Marcia?
Yes.
I have to get these numbers back in order to present to you all so you can, we can have to pay people. We can't just hire people and then turn right around and two months later fire them again or lay them off. We have to have a plan. So in that plan is, if we do the, um, um, carry forward, and I can come up with some of that money, which I think that we're, we're getting close, we're, we're not there. We don't want to say that we are because we don't know yet. And we get the bonds sold like we had planned. And Mr. Duff, this has always been the plan from word go. Is that not right? Mr. Sandage?
That's right.
Ms. Litt?
Yes.
We've been working on this for months. We've been shooting for this target date. And the bottom line is, once we get that back, we're going, the first step, the rollout would be to get the furloughs off. Once we get the furloughs off for everybody, then we'll start working on rehire, other things as far as the, the, the hiring freeze and some things like that. And we have all that laid out that we're working on now. Is that right, Matt?
That's right.
And we have that how process, how we're going to do. But it's all based on what numbers are coming in. Period in the story. So what we're waiting on is, is to get over the $700,000. We'd like to see it around 730 for sales tax to come in, Marcia. We took 30 based on the million, divided it by 12, came all in there. The carry forward for the million, 68 is my magic number on that side. And then the bond sale, hopefully it comes in where we want it to come in. And it might come back to where it's not, you know, and that, and we're going to have to reassess. Here's the bottom line is, guys, we have to keep the city running for everybody. We're doing very, we're doing what we can with the best we got. I have a retired guy that's mad, that's upset, that's stirring the pot for these guys that are working their tail off up there and getting them putting worry thoughts in them and other citizens. He didn't come up here and bother to get the budget numbers. Didn't call, cover to get the plan, either to the union president or anybody else. They had that stuff. None of those people come up there and want to discuss it with us. I don't mind taking pop shots, but the people of El Reno are better than that. The workers are better than that. All workers, the policemen, the firemen, the water department. We're working hard for all these families. Not just one family. Not families that live outside of El Reno or live in El Reno. We're working for all of them. That's what we do here. Now, I hope I answered some questions. I'm an open book. You can check all my numbers because I got them all from, 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 from the computer that printed them out to me, that, that we have documented. And every staff member here is absolutely brought in on these deals. It breaks my heart that we're sitting here fighting over something that we have no control over. That every other city is doing all these other things and you're mad about this. I could tell you about Chickasha, what's going to happen there. There's all these other cities that have to go through all this stuff. Now, that's the money part. Now, council, do you have any question on the money?
I do have one question about something that, that I took note of what
Sure.
what he read. Um, that, about no badges being lost. Um, are marshals considered badges?
They are not.
Okay.
And I say they're not. They are not part of the union. And I consider, we could, in the city world, you consider badges, union, union badges is what we consider.
So even though they're, okay. So that, I think clarification on that, since the marshals were laid off, that, for people to say, okay.
They, they were, they're commissioned, but they're not commissioned through the police department. They're commissioned through, really, the city, the municipal side of it. And, 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 and have to be, uh, 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 they have to go through Kid Brown, I guess, for, for, for sign off.
Okay.
But they're, they're city employees. They're part of the employees that we laid off.
Yeah. And that's what I was wondering, since they had a badge.
There, there was two of them. No. I mean, and we, we laid, we laid off 17, didn't hire back a lot of people at, at the golf course, didn't hire back any of the pool. We shut down a lot of things. It's not, I guess, what I guess, I don't understand is, it's like that we're picking on one group and it's just not true. This was a completely across the board deal that we're trying to save the whole ship. We got some holes in there. We're trying to save the whole ship. And, and don't forget, one more thing, you said, you know, about, about the layoffs, everything else. Chief Legali offered to resign. That's how classless that statement was. To save the money, to do what we got to do. And we already had a position as city manager, assistant city manager. And that's not right either. Because he has more than 30 something years too. And he's worked his tail off too. His 38. So, let's, let's take that in consideration. Anything else on the numbers? Or my plan?
Um, let me, on these carry forward numbers.
Sure.
And before it was talked about, I think mentioned that the, we're still waiting on approximately $2 million from the tornado. Is that still the figure that we're waiting on?
No. Let me answer one at a time.
Okay.
No, it was, it's a little over $2 million. But don't forget, during that process, I want to make sure we're clear on that, they kick out certain things. So certain projects, like a bridge on Reformatory Road,
Just kicked out.
got kicked out. So I didn't, it didn't qualify for it.
Okay.
So the total amount is under $2 billion, but it's still around that number. But I want to make sure it's true because it really was $2,206, whatever it was. So we're really a little bit below $2 million. Right now, and we check that every day, and right now we're right at a million eight, is it?
That was a million eight, but a million two have, have been obligated.
A million two has been authorized.
Okay.
Okay. And I'm waiting on the 600 something thousand dollars, big one I got, and to be authorized. And it has not been authorized yet. Now, saying that, I'm working with the state. And I want to, I want to give a plug here. Cinderlani Paxton and I have worked our tail off getting this. There's other cities, I, I got to be careful. There's other cities that aren't getting this as fast as what we are. And we're going up there, we're taking all those time sheets. And Amy has worked her tail off, along with Chris and the rest of them, all of our staff to get these in. So we have the 1.2 basically in the hole approved. And we're waiting on $1,600 something thousand dollars. So it's not part of the carry forward, but I am keeping that part of the $5 million safety net. If I get that, then I can replace that, that $2 million. And I think I told you that. I, I, we discussed all of that before. If I get that, that money in faster, it'll help me take that $5 million. That's right. Well, it's not the carry forward.
Right.
It's not part of the carry forward. The carry forward is what they use on their current budget where they carry forward.
Right.
You're not saying that right. Let's make sure, I want to make sure you're clear.
Yeah.
That's a separate number.
Right. I was saying, that will help to be able to take the furloughs away.
Now, well, that'll, that'll help, that will help take the furloughs away. But everybody, once again, the budget amount is money coming in. It's not actual cash. So once that comes in, then I have to come up with the 1.4. I have cash, I think we can hopefully get of the $1,680,000 with the regular carry forward. It's not including that.
Okay.
That's not including that. The, the, the $2 million is what you have to replace the $5 million for in our regular budget that was our emergency fund.
Yeah.
But it's still got to go in there. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. See there? Any other questions on the money? All right. We'll move on to 10. Discussion regarding 2020 emergency response time for the Cityville Reno. It's just not You know what the response time is for El Reno, Oklahoma? What's our average? I'll tell you what. Let me make it better for you. Didn't pick certain numbers. Picked the whole thing. Went through the whole process. As of April the 1st to,
July 3rd.
To July 3rd. To July 3rd. What's the average response time in El Reno, Oklahoma? Anybody know? You mean 38 years? You don't know what the response time is? Anybody? What's the average response time? Wow. Four minutes, four minutes 58 seconds. Four minutes 58 When we were down on the other shift, when we had, we were, and you said a shift and you did kind of correct yourself at the end, we haven't used that, that, we have shut that station completely down. That station's not shut down. You came to Jason, Jason came to me because you wanted to put a note on the front door that said the station's closed. We're not closing stations. And as far as sick, if you watch that video, all of our deal is sick. We have more sick than we've ever had before, based on the numbers. But hang on, now you want to, now you want to use COVID. And those were COVID numbers too. Is that right?
COVID.
And we stated that. So the bottom line was, those numbers are included in that. But yet, our response times were seven minutes and 38 seconds when we had the other shift. We're doing better now, response time wise, than we, on furloughs and running out of a half a station one time, every once in a while, than we ever have. That's on total runs. Chief, that's what you gave me. That's on everything. We spent hours with Kathleen doing this deal. Every bit of it. The response times are better now than they ever have been.
That's true.
So you take the numbers. And, and here's the tricky part. Here's what you're not doing. Here's where you messed up. Here's where you deceived,
You're not me to me.
Here's where you deceived the public, Mr. Shrum. Here's where you deceived the public, Mr. Shrum. Is you took the run sheets from the fire department. Did you pull the one from the police from the Patford?
Yeah.
Well, so if you're having a heart attack, you're counting just on the fire department, not Patford? Because some of these sheets that you had question mark, we are absolutely 12, 11 minutes late. Are we not? Well, some of these were 12 minutes, 17 minutes late. But Patford is there within six minutes. Five minutes. Three minutes. They're contracted. So, but, but, but they're covering El Reno citizens. We're getting the best bang for our system. So once again, we got our deal covered. That's what I'm trying to tell you. You're not telling the citizens the right number. You're, you're skewing the numbers. We're taking the whole number that you got, bud. And we broke, we broke it all down. We broke it all down from Paul Ratliff and everybody else. No, no, no. You can't just say that, Danny. Because here's the bottom line is, here's the, here's the reality. You sit on there, hey, you sit on there, you sit on there, that, that you sit on there, that if a guy had a heart attack, well, guess what? The guy that has a heart attack, they're there. Don't lie to the public. Don't scare old people. Don't scare people. Don't scare people in certain parts of town.
Why yelling?
This is not right. Well, I'm upset, Timmer, because I tell you what, you guys are wrong.
You knew it was going down in December.
No, none of this.
It was quoted in the papers. It was going down in December.
Here's the bottom line is.
And you look at the budget.
Look, your scatter shotgun deal is not going to work. You voted with me on about everything else besides improving, except, besides increasing the budget. You voted with me, JT did, everybody else. All these other employees signed up for it. We're fighting for them. We're not fighting for a disgruntled, upset, retired person that looked six guys in the eye, looked six guys in the eye and said, you take the layoff. I'm not taking a furlough. Well, two days later, retires, boys and girls, you're right. I am upset. I don't think it's right. Now, if you're going to question me or my integrity, go right ahead. It ain't the best. But I care about this community. And I've done the numbers right. And if you don't think I have, then you double check me. Because you, damn sure everybody here is voting with me. Everybody else is approved everything I've done. And I took staff's advice on everything we've done. Guys, these firemen, these policemen and these workers, we got to get them off furlough. We got to get sales tax back up. You can get mad all you want to because you're retired and you're not on insurance anymore and everything else. And that's what all this is about. It's a personal deal. But we can focus on each other and spending money in El Reno, doing the right thing, doing nice things. I've never seen so many churches care more about these firemen and these policemen by bringing those stuff up there. I suggest they do it every time. You know, the bottom line is, they need our support. We're giving it to them. We're doing it by doing the right decisions. We're not going to be like other cities being in trouble. Our budget has been cut more than anybody else's in Canadian counties. Can we deal with it? We're dealing with it. But that's the budget you're in. You budgeted $700,000. Tracy, you got $700,000 in. That's with the furloughs. Nobody else seemed to have a plan, but I'm standing up nights, Marcia, working on it. Am I not?
Yes.
Calling constantly, emailing late at night. I love this community. I love our employees. I love this citizen. We have to do the right thing. I'm not going to stand by and let union bosses push us around and divide us. It cannot happen. It will not happen. We have to stay strong. We have to do the right thing. And we have to stand behind the men and women that work for us. And I'll tell you right now, I'm not going to back down. I've done the right thing. And I'm, I'm not going to be over smoking beers and just a bunch of red herrings. None of that's true. It proved that because they couldn't answer the questions. I wouldn't answer some of them. But, but that, that's where I'm at. I just, I'm upset about it. But, but the bottom line is, that's the truth.
Well, and every city's in their, in their troubles. Some of them just hadn't got very far yet.
Every, there's some cities are making more money that are outside. Marcia and I were talking about because they're not going outside. We're close to the metro area. We're suffering just like Chickasha, like Guthrie. We're watching all these cities. We're talking to the mayors. We're talking to the city managers. I'm on the OML board. I mean, we're watching all this stuff. We're not doing anything new that they're not. Nothing. Not one thing. Well, any other questions on the, on the, on the response times?
Um, yeah. So that was a, that was response times from all three departments?
The problem was, the problem was, the concern that you had from Danny, he called you, was he was, he was, he was shocked by the response times. So then when we started talking and we started looking, I was kind of shocked with response times. But then I got Paul together with Jason and Kathleen. We went out there for, we pulled all the times. But the times were not including Patford or the police. We had a police officer that used his paddles to save a person up there at, at Sid's diner. You know, so, so it's kind of one of those things. What happens is, when you, I call it the bat button. When certain things happen, you got to get to the root of it, Tracy. When, when you call 911, you, you call 911 and you say, I need 911. And they're going to say, what's your, what's your emergency? And you say, per se, let's use heart attack because that's what he used. Heart attack. Well, she typed C and heart attack. Well, then she has a list Well, then she has a list of questions, they used to have a flip book, that's how old I am, Jason, but she has a list of questions that she goes through, he or her, and asks you those questions defining that. In the meantime, a heart attack's what they call an all call, so I call it the bat button. So that deal, everybody's responded out. Patford and everybody else. And don't forget, during the time that we're talking about, our response times are better because we got a new contract with Patford that we made him be in three different locations. And Jason Duff and, and Kent McGauley came up with that deal as we were getting fought behind by, by Danny on, on, on Mercy that had one ambulance here. And we're paying the same amount of money that we were to Mercy.
Less money.
Less money, sorry. I didn't want to say that because I didn't want to be misleading, but that's, that's right, it's less money. So the response times when the all call comes out is different. So that's what you're looking at and that's what you have to analyze. And that's what they have to do because we wanted to make sure we weren't doing right. Because here's the thing is, the people, the retired guys, they're, they're not picking on me, they're picking on him, they're picking on these firemen. That's who they're picking on. They're not picking on me. It's all right here, black and white. They got the run sheet, you have a copy of them. And that's what Brown and I, when I went talking, you gotta have the whole picture of it, the whole thing. Any other questions? Any other comments? All right. Hope that clears some things up. I feel better. I feel better that we got all the truth out. I feel better that, that we're gonna move forward. And the bottom line is, I don't mind discussions. Let's get after it, but let's tell the truth about it. Let's just don't say, well, you, you can't do that. We gotta make decisions. Any other questions, Bobo?
Nope.
All right, let's move on, we're in the council.
Number 10.
Number 10.
Number 11.
11.
11. Discussion, consideration, authorizing, City of El Reno, minimum authority to solicit finance proposals in connection with the assurance of the authority sales tax revenue notes, Series 2020, authorize the acquisition of professional services and agreements and obtaining other provisions related to there too. And Lindsey, you wanted to add and authorize the city manager and/or the mayor to sign, is that correct? Okay. So basically what I'm asking for is what I told you, I want to put those bonds out, I want to fill the water. I think we can do it. Uh, we wanted to do it, you know, uh, the timing's really right now. I think with the rates and stuff, Tracy, I think we'll get a good, good response back. So I feel good about it. I won't know till I get the numbers back. So let me, get 30 days, they get out, Matt and I will get Alan Brooks and Chris on it and we'll put them out for bid, we'll bring the proposals back and we'll see where they're at.
Make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to send out to our council, to our, authorize our financial, um...
Good ruse.
Well, yeah, good ruse, what's the different word for it, Matt?
Team.
Financial team, that's a better way to do it because that covers Alan too. Financial team to put it out to bid and then bring it back for proposals at the next council meeting. And authorize a mayor and/or city manager to sign documents if needed. Because we're not approving anything, but just if I have to sign them to send them out.
Right.
Second.
I got a motion from Bob, second by Tracy. Roll call, let's start with Tracy.
Yes.
Councilman Bullard?
Yep.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to 12. To conduct a public hearing, consideration approval of adopted route for the future comprehensive plan for 2020-40 and the comprehensive plan for El Reno. I now consider this public hearing open. Dustin, get up here. Dustin, I can't believe we're here. You have worked your tail off, haven't you?
I appreciate that. Uh, it's been a lot of work by a lot of people.
And, and I will compliment, I know that, uh, I was involved a lot of it on the back, behind the scenes, but the Councilman Ryder was very involved in it on, on the side, she was on the committee and along with other people, but I really appreciate Mike and everybody else. You know, this is a neat deal that we're doing here, Dustin. Go ahead, tell us a little bit about it and then I'll brag on you.
Sure, um, I'm going to skip over what that big, uh, presentation is for, for time constraints, uh, but I will mention, you know, this is, this is kind of what it, this is kind of what it ends up looking like. Um, this took the opinions, the, the, uh, the needs, the desires of over 400 members of the City of El Reno that we reached out to in many different ways and many different times over the last year and a half. And we talk about our, uh, we talk about who El Reno is, who El Reno is going to be, the growth that we are going to see in this community that is substantiated by, um, our, our development patterns, what we're seeing happening out at Roush Coleman, all those things. And we get to talk about people's priorities, we get to talk about, um, what a vision is for the future of El Reno. Parks, trails, transportation, um, and we get, and, and we finally get a new future land use map. We have not updated our future land use map since 2003 at the adoption of the last comprehensive plan. This one actually has I-40 and Radio Road on it. Among, among these things, um, we, there has been a lot of time, there's been a lot of effort and we were able to do it in-house, um, which is a fiscally responsible decision. Um, and I, I firmly believe that this gives us the action plan that we need to, to know how, where we need to be and how we can get there over the next 20 years in growth in, in all, all sectors of the, of the, of, of the, what the community is. And I'd like to point out right here, there's a list of the people that were involved in creation and I, I would like, I'm not going to read that list of people off, but I would like to extend my deepest and most sincere thanks to everybody that has been a part of putting this together. I firmly believe that this is a commencement, like a, like a graduation is not the end, this is the beginning of the work that we have to do to continue making El Reno better tomorrow than it is today. Do, does anybody have any questions either from the, uh, from the council or from, from the audience?
Yeah, can we get a copy of that?
There will be a digital copy available after, um, I, I, I can get a digital copy to you, yes.
You know, Dustin, I want to say that, that the work and the hours and hours of work, you did a splendid job on this and it, it's very concise, it's very direct. And I, I'm, I'm glad that it's here for, for the city employees and for the council and for the city manager because this is going to help us in the future for every decision that comes to the council and to the city manager to be able to say, okay, does that tie, does what we're looking at tie into the, to the plan and the vision and mission of what we're trying to do with this plan? So it's gonna be a helpful tool for us.
Well, we, we've had these before.
Yeah.
And we've always had one and I was part of the, I was part of the one, the, what was the last one called?
Catch the Vision.
Catch the Vision. And I was also part of it when, uh, they paid, uh, I was on planning commission time, they paid Triad, I think, 148,000 dollars for one piece of it.
In $2,003.
Yeah, yeah, in $2,003. So, uh, when we, Dustin came to us, that was exactly what we wanted him to focus on based on whatever background. Dustin, you've done a great job, I'm not just bragging, this is, I'm like Tracy. This, you gotta be a weird guy to get into this company, to get excited about zoning and everything else. You got, there's a little bit off with you, I think, but that's okay, we like it. Because it's, it's, it's mundane, it's, it's, it's over and over and overlays. And, and really what, another thing, Tracy, you just kind of said about as far as the manager, really it lays it out for the developers, what it does.
It does.
That's what it does everywhere, anything else. It, it lays it out for the developer, where they're gonna spend that money, where the development's gonna be, where the other infrastructure have to go and everything else. And our vision was not, you know, not too far off, but it was a lot farther off because of the growth we had on 66 that's changed the, changed the deal. So this really puts us in line. I'm gonna tell you, I, I just can't thank you enough for what you've done. Dustin, you're the epitome of a, a planner, uh, you worked hard, you've done a great job with this and I think everybody absolutely agrees, um, uh, bringing all the community together from the small two or three people that came to showed up at meetings, Mike, to, to the, to the ones that had eight or nine different, you know, 20 different people. Uh, and we even had, El Reno now, we had a full house. So, so I think we've got to do, and I, and I, the best picture I like is with you and those little kids, laying their own city out, making it work. So really, I mean, honestly, this is one of those thankless deals, but Tracy's absolutely correct when, when she said that. This is gonna be more important for the future than we think just because of the layout of it.
I certainly hope so.
It will.
Uh, and, and I will say, some of this is, uh, I did my best to make sure that even if the topics were mundane, we tried to do it in a way that it was digestible for people to actually read.
And the citizens did a great job. Like I said, we, we had, we had a great participation, whether sometimes we thought it was small, but even with a small group, we had a great participation.
Our participation.
Yes, it was great. And it was a good cross-section of the community. We had a great show up at Northwest Community, we had a great show up, you know, uh, we had a better show up there than we did at the fire station, you know, on 27th Street.
Absolutely.
And I thought we'd have a pretty big crowd out there. So it was a great, great mix of the whole thing. It was a, uh, you know, great, great mix of it. I, I really thought it'd be, it'd be more attended on certain ends, but, but it really surprised you how people liked it. But the people, the citizens that helped put this out did a great job.
I'd also like to commend you, Dustin, on the, on the plan, you did a great job with it, assembling the steering committee, guiding the steering committee through the process, planning commission, all, all of it, all the different components.
Parts.
All the parts have a different, require a different skill set even. So from data analysis to the GIS mapping to the public participation, engaging the public, it's, there's a lot to it. Um, and I like to think of it as sort of the playbook, like you mentioned, Matt, for the developers, for the city. Um, and it's, it is sort of a changing playbook too, because we don't know that, we didn't know that Halliburton was gonna come when they came and that changed the whole playbook.
We didn't know, we didn't know Radio, Radio Road.
We didn't know Radio Road was gonna come. That changed the whole playbook. So it's kind of a living and breathing document too, that as we grow and change, the document has to change with it. So that, though it is being adopted tonight, I think it's important to know that in the future, there will likely be amendments that are necessary to keep it updated and functional.
A living document.
A living document, yes.
Well, great job, Dustin.
Thank you.
And Matt, you, you, you helped steer Dustin, but you kind of get into this weird stuff too, I don't.
We, we butted heads a little bit and we, we had a lot of fun with it, yeah.
Okay, well, I think it's great.
Thanks.
Okay, we'll move on.
Thank you, Dustin. You need to close your public hearing.
So I need to close the public hearing. I now consider, anybody else's discussion on public hearing on Dustin's plan? Anybody wanna criticize Dustin? Okay, I bet we're kidding after that one. I now consider the public hearing closed. All right, now we'll go on to discussion, consideration, possible action to Resolution 12, 21 dash 003, Resolution adopting the route, the future comprehensive plan for 2040, the comprehensive plan for the El Reno future land use map within the route, the future comprehensive plan of 2040 as future land plan for the City of El Reno, Oklahoma and provisions for the plan revised for updating necessary and providing for effective date. An effective date will be based on us approving it, is that correct? So I make a motion that we approve this as of to, you know, as of now. Do we need to do a sever bill, do we have to do an emergency or anything like that? Okay?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Roll call vote start with Robinson. You live?
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Councilman Bullard?
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Dustin. And, and, and thanks for our community. All right, 13. Conduct a public hearing, considering rezone by Joe David and Carrie Ann Felton, reclassified rezoning district parcel from light industrial I-1 to restricted commercial CR at 1705 South Choctaw Avenue within the northwest quarter, northwest fourth, section 16 township 12 North Range, seven west Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma. I now consider the public hearing open. Okay, Dustin, this deal came before the planning commission, um, it's located right here, boy, they got some good neighbors, don't they?
Oh, 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 recede that comment.
That's me, yeah, good neighbors. Be careful, be careful, Dobson. Uh, I, I think it's a great deal, it's a great fit for that, uh, it's been a daycare, it's been everything else. They want to, basically Dustin, there's two, there's two parts to this, uh, this one public hearing, but they want to get the zone, run a business out of there and then they want to live in half of it too, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Uh, it's, it's fit for that, it's not gonna bother anybody, it's on a road that has businesses on both sides, uh, I'm zoned industrial right behind it, so.
Yeah.
Okay, was there any questions or any comments at planning commission?
At planning commission, uh, passed unanimously. I do have a little letter from, uh, the, the Moores who are, uh, purchasing the property, but it, it basically states what you're, what you're, uh, what you're saying, uh, they, they want to purchase the property, they want to, um, they want to make it into a business for themselves.
Are you a Moore, are you Mr. Moore? Okay, well, we're glad to have you, I'll, I'll be your neighbor and I got good sugar over there.
All right. Uh, they, they said that, uh, they said that they wanted to, to do this and then the conditional use permit that comes later is for being able to live there.
Sure, no problem. And there were no protests or anything else?
That's correct.
Yeah, okay, thanks, Dustin. Anybody else here want to protest or discuss about it? All right, I now consider the public hearing closed. We'll move on to, uh, discussion of possible action, uh, to adopt the resolution, I don't know, I'm sorry, uh, possible action ordinance number 9230, an ordinance reclassifying zoning district a partial of light industrial I-1 to restricted commercial CR at 1705 Choctaw Avenue within the northwest quarter of section 16 township 12 North Range, seven, uh, west Indian Meridian, Canadian County.
Make a motion to approve.
I got a motion.
Second.
Second. Roll call vote start with Robinson.
Oh, yeah.
Councilman Bullard?
Yep.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Motion carries. We'll go on to 14. Conduct a public hearing, request by Joe David, Carrie Ann Felton to establish conditional use permit for dwelling unit restricted commercial zoning CR district quarter northwest, uh, 16 township 12 North Range, seven west Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma. I consider this public hearing open. Same deal, basically they want to live there, no problems, they had a, they had a, a deal there, uh, people come up there, uh, I don't think there's any, any questions about it or anything else. I'm gonna miss Joe and Carrie, they've been great neighbors, I'm sure these people will be good neighbors too.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they'll be great neighbors, okay. All right, any questions? Okay, I make a motion for approval. Do I get a second?
Second.
I'm sorry. Public hearing closed, I make a motion for approval.
Can you repeat?
Lindsay, discussion consideration possible action to, to, to use permit CUP for dwelling unit within the restricted commercial CRO zoning district, a partial located at seventeen oh five South Chalktall Avenue within the northwest quarter, northwest four, section sixteen township twelve north range seven west of Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma. I make, no, you're not going to do it, I'm going to do it, as much as you give me, I make a motion to approve it.
Second.
There you go, thank you, Bob. Got a motion, second, roll call votes start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Pat, thanks for everything. Appreciate you, tell them I said hi, and if they need something, let me know.
Will do.
Tell Carrie and them we're really going to miss them.
Had trouble.
Okay. We'll go on to fifteen, conduct public hearing, considered request by Troy Williams on behalf of AT&amp;T, establish conditional use permit CUP for communication towers within the rural agriculture A-1 zoning district, partial located at fourteen thirty-six South Country Club Road within the northwest quarter, northwest four, section eighteen township twelve north range seven west of Indian Meridian, Canadian County. I now consider this public hearing open. Uh, basically, Dustin, this was bought before the plan, planning commission, uh, this is a radio tower, is that correct? Behind the Redlands Commu-, cell tower, that's a cell tower, just because I'm older, I can still call them radios. Uh, cell tower back behind the Redlands Community College baseball field, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, all the, uh, packets were presented around, people, uh, went to planning commission, they have, they have any problem with it?
Uh, there was one question presented to me before the plan, uh, before the planning commission meeting, I was able to answer that question, and they did not show up for the planning commission meeting, the planning commission, uh, recommended to approve unanimously.
Okay. Now, was Gibson's notified about this?
Yes.
Okay. All right, that's the only thing I got a question on. All right. I got a motion, or, uh, okay, any other, any other questions? Okay, I now consider the public hearing closed. Discussion and consideration possible action to establish conditional use permit CUP for communication tower within the rural agriculture A-1 zoning district, a parcel land located at fourteen thirty-six South Country Club Road within the northeast quarter, northeast four, section eighteen township twelve north range seven west Indian Meridian, Canadian County, Oklahoma. Make a motion to approve. I got a motion to approve.
Second.
Second, roll call votes start with Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. All right, um, you're approved.
Okay.
Okay. Number sixteen and number seventeen, I'd like to pool these, if you don't mind, um, these aren't ready yet, uh, they've had some rain issues, that, they haven't been able to complete some things, and we're still kind of working on some things, so if you don't mind, but I would need your help, Tracy and Bob and Timmy, I know you can hear me, um, they are selling these houses fast as they're building them, Dustin, aren't they? They want to get this done fast, but we want to make sure we're all covered on our end. So I told them that we would probably go ahead and have a special planning commission, I mean, I'm sorry, special council meeting, council meeting, to make sure we get that through. So next week, you know, if we get this thing going, we might do a noon deal to discuss it, whatever else, we'll get all the information to you way before time, but, but they're, they're really, they're selling these houses big time. Okay. All right, so we'll go on to eighteen, discussion consideration possible action to recommend ordinance number ninety-two thirty-one, ordinance section twenty-three, chapter one forty-seven of the code of ordinances, city of El Reno, concerning time, place, and manner restrictions of medical marijuana retailer locations and declaring emergency. Dustin, this is a kind of cleanup between you and, uh, Chief Brown and Kurt and everybody else, right?
Uh, yes, this, this one, uh, rather than the next one, this one specifically deals with time, place, and manner. Uh, this is the restriction currently that, uh, marijuana retailer businesses cannot open on, uh, Christmas and Sundays and those kinds of things. Uh, we do not have restrictions on other businesses that, uh, do this, and the state is getting, uh, more and more lenient concerning alcohol.
So, to make sure I'm clear, really, when all this stuff, what we're doing is, we're, as it, as it rolled out, the state was more cautious, they've been letting loose a little bit more and modifying it towards regular businesses, so we're just, like I asked you, we're just kind of looking at those deals to do the same thing, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, this is the, basically, the, the, the times, dates for the closing times, like liquor stores.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion for approval? I got a motion by Bob for approve. Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Robinson, roll call start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Mayor White?
Yes. All right, nineteen, discussion consideration possible action ordinance.
Declare emergency?
Yes, I make a motion, declare emergency.
So moved.
Got a motion, a second, roll call start with Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to nineteen, discussion consideration possible action regarding ordinance number ninety-two thirty-two, ordinance created section thirty-two thirty-three, article three, chapter one forty-seven of the code of ordinance, the city of El Reno, providing for medical marijuana, transport laboratory, and waste disposal permitting procedures and regulations at the time. Basically, this is for transporting, is that correct?
Transporters, laboratories, and waste disposal.
Because we have, we didn't have nothing for them.
That is correct.
Okay.
Uh, we had a couple of restrictions on waste disposal in the, in the code, but, uh, did not have anything requiring a permit for them, did not, and, and did not really actually have a full deal. Um, the next item, twenty, talks about the zoning and, and where those things can be.
But basically, we're following, we're following the state stuff.
Uh, yes, and these, the regulations for the transporters mirror the regulations that we have for our growers, the laboratories and waste disposals, as they're a little, as they involve chemicals, are more like our processor requirements.
Okay. And Ken, you're, I mean, that's what, you and Kurt, I mean, everybody's fine with that. Okay. All right, thank you. And there's no emergency on this one, right, Lindsay? All right, I make a motion, we approve, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ballhorn, roll call start with Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Move on to twenty, discussion consideration possible action to approve resolution twenty oh five, resolution of the city of El Reno, Oklahoma, to establish fees, uh, for chapter one forty-seven, article three, the code of the city of El Reno, their marijuana establishments, ordinance. Basically, we're charging money for them now, anyway.
That's correct.
All right. Yeah, you can't have all the regulations, and that's not charge you. I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Got a motion, a second, roll call votes start with, uh, Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Number twenty-one, discussion consideration possible action to approve ordinances number nine-two-three-three, an ordinance, the city of El Reno, Oklahoma, amending section five seven fifty-seven, article nine, the section said, uh, sixty-eight, sixty-eight, article eleven, chapter the three hundred sixty-one, three sixty-one, the code of the marijuana zoning, declaring repealing, providing for severability, and declaring emergency. Dustin?
This, this, uh, like we said, that the growers and transporters are, uh, the regulations are lined up, and the laboratory and waste disposals are lined up, this allow, or this puts it in our zoning code that it meets up with, uh, that they're the same, the, the regulations are the same as far as where you can have those businesses.
Based on chemicals and other.
Yes.
Industrial, light industrial, modern industrial, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Uh, motion?
Make a motion to approve?
Got a motion to approve, second?
Second.
Second with Ryder.
I tried to pause.
All right, roll call start with Robinson, Timmy, she was waiting on you. All right, Timmy said yes.
Yep.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Motion for emergency?
Second.
Got a motion, second, roll call votes start with Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. All right, we'll move on to number twenty-two, per authority, Bob, this is, this discussion consideration possible action regarding terminal building layout for design of city of, or city of El Reno Regional Airport.
You didn't take action.
Okay, then we'll go on to twenty-three, discussion consideration action, possible action to accept an eighty-five thousand gallon tank located in El Reno Regional Airport from Eastham Raw Water District.
Per authority.
I got per authority from Tracy, second by Bob, roll call vote with Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Twenty-four, discussion consideration possible action to approve a utility easement with Eastham Rural Water District for the booster pump location.
Per authority.
Got per authority, Bob, second, roll call votes start with Ryder.
Yes.
Councilman Robinson?
Yep.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yep.
Mayor White?
Yes. All right, number twenty-five, nomination appointment for two members for the remainder of three years, set to expire June twenty, twenty-two, two members for the remainder of the three-year, hang on now, uh, twenty, twenty-two, and two members for the twenty twenty-three, and then one for the twenty twenty-one to serve on the El Reno, uh, El Reno Municipal Planning Commission, I can't even get it done, can't even say it right. Well, here's what I got, I don't know, I've just been thinking about this, we got basically five positions, and we got six people apply. But Dave, Dave Behan, who's a good friend of mine, and a good friend of, I mean, of y'all, but I love Super Dave, but he's on the, uh, he's already on the, uh.
Board of Adjustment.
Board of Adjustments, and he does a great job there, and he, they got a big deal, he is on, he's still there, isn't he? Okay. So I'd like to nominate Tom Lloyd and Vicky Proctor to the ones that expire two thousand twenty-three. And I'd also like to nominate Gerardo Troncosco and Tanya Fisher to the ones that expire twenty twenty-two, and I'd like to nominate Michael Freeman, just because you're last, Mike, it's twenty twenty-one, and once you're on there, you usually don't go off.
Thank you.
I got a second, or, but before we do that, any other nominations? Any other nominations? I make a motion that nomination ceases, and by, we appoint those five by the timeframes by acclamation. All in favor, say aye. All right, okay. All right. Now we'll move on to twenty, where am I at, twenty, twenty, is it twenty-seven? Twenty-six. Discussion possible action regarding resolution number twenty-one oh six, a resolution authorizing calling for holding a general election in the city of El Reno for a purpose of electing one elected official as council member from Ward One, setting forth certain facts required by state law and directing that resolution that be delivered by the city clerk and the secretary of Canadian County Election Board for the purpose of giving such official notice of said election.
Make a motion to approve.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
I got a motion by Bob, second by Ryder, roll call start with Robinson.
Yes.
Councilman Ballhorn?
Yes.
Councilman Ryder?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. All right, twenty-seven, twenty-seven, discussion consideration possible action regarding appointment of an El Reno residence to fill Ward One council member seat vacancy. Uh, basically, Roger wrote a letter to Mr. Ry, uh, to, to, um, Mr. Cronster, uh, he's no longer on the city council, uh, and, you know, I will say this, JT's done a great job, JT's going to be truly missed, he was a great asset to help us with St. Anthony's getting in here, you know, he was in there, he's had a great business mind, he has a great business mind, he's done so much for downtown in his re-modifications, and, um, I can't say enough about JT. I know we've all made mistakes, I damn sure made a lot of them, and, um, one moment doesn't categorize all the good things that you've done in your life. And I tell you, JT was a pivotal part, part of the finances, Marsha, to help this deal, and absolutely, Dustin, but before you got here, was absolutely, um, one of the strongest people on this planning commission, uh, knew his stuff, knew that ordinance back and forth. So we're truly going to miss JT, JT's going to be good, and I understand that.